Thank you for staying with us. We will now link up with Ashomomo Imodu and Tjesu Adeyemi in our Abuja studio for the conversation on the tax reform. Good morning, thank you for, I want to say thank you for joining us.
Yes, they're also joining us. It's a line.
All right, Tjesu, Ashomomo, good morning. It's good to see you guys. You can take over the conversation now.
All right. And good morning and thanks for staying with us on the show. Now, the Senate has commenced a two-day public hearing on the proposed tax reform bills, bringing together key stakeholders from Nigeria's economic and financial sectors. Chairman of the Senate Committee on Finance, Sani Mousa, says that the process will be transparent and guided by national interests. He emphasized that the hearing aims to review and reform the country's Nigeria's tax laws to align with the current economic realities. And the reforms, he stated, are designed to ensure equity, fairness, and inclusivity while eliminating inefficiencies in existing tax policies.
Senator Mousa wants all stakeholders and the general public to actively participate in the discussions, emphasizing the importance of collective contributions in shaping a tax system that fosters economic growth and national prosperity. The hearing, which runs from February 24th to the 25th, provides a platform for lawmakers, tax administrators, business representatives, and citizens to deliberate on four key tax reform bills. For more on this, we have the chairman, Senate Committee on Ethics, Privileges, and Public Petitions, Senator Neda Imaswe, joining us live in the studio this morning. Thank you so much, distinguished, for joining us.
Thank you for having me. Good morning.
It's good to have you. Well, the tax reform bill is still at the public hearing stage. What kind of interest or participation has it generated? And is the turnout of the various interest groups to make an impute commensurate with the kind of criticisms it got at the initial stage?
I don't know if I would say if it's commensurate, but I would say this, that the turnout so far has been very encouraging. Nigerians have actually showed a lot of interest in all walks of life. You have retired Pamseks were there, all the MDAs there, Arrows, the Minister for Finances was also there, and of course, the senators were all present. So far, from what I see, there isn't much disagreement at all. That surprised me because if you hear the furor that went before the bill, the proposition of the bill, you would have thought that there's so much disparity and disagreement as to the reform bill. But given what happened yesterday, it's still going to continue today.
There's no resistance.
Sorry? Yes, there isn't resistance at all. I mean, everyone agreed that, yes, we need a reformation of the bill. And that is the starting point. And that's what we said from the very beginning, that this law is long overdue, that we must go back to it and revisit it. The economy is moving, it's changing, and we need to expand it, and we need revenue to do that. And so these laggages and those who have not been captured within the bracket of the tax will have to be brought in. But it's also done in a very compassionate manner because there are those who we believe are not able to pay this tax. There are start-of businesses. There are businesses who believe that they're not strong enough to pay tax at this time. And so everything has been done to encourage them and to support them in such a way that they can grow their businesses, so that they also can be employers of labor.
Now, help us to understand from the period the president submitted the bill, and what are the various stages that will lead to the eventual passing of this bill?
Okay, so the president is announced on the floor by the leader of the Senate, Senator Kwame Bamedele, who will introduce the bill about the tax reform. And then the bill is read for the first time.
Okay.
Once the bill is read for the first time, then it's disseminated to senators for us to review and see exactly what it is that we need to do. And so it comes back again for a second reading. By the time it comes for a second reading, the leader of the Senate, who is the one who introduced the bill, will now give, you know, a very detailed account of why we need this bill passed. And we are already seized with information as to what the bill contains. And so contributions are allowed on the floor. So every senator who wishes to say something about the bill is allowed to say something about the bill, and then those contributions are also taken into consideration. And then it goes back to the committee again, based on what has been discussed on the floor. Go back, committee goes back to review it and look at what discussion or what contribution that have been contributed by various members of the chambers. And then we come back with a position report again to the floor. At that point, everything is looked at again, and then it's ripe now for what we call the public hearing.
Okay.
The public hearing is just a situation where everybody, all Nigerians, all interested parties are invited to come to the National Assembly to discuss this bill. And again, they are all seized with the information, what the bill contains and what we need to do with it. And so they come, and then we discuss. They are given two minutes, five minutes, depending on the situation, and allow them to tell us, having read the bill yourself, what do you think? Do you agree? Do you disagree? What area do you think we should, you know, amend or take a look at again? And so they all give us their positions, and they give us a paper, a position paper, which we take back individually.
So that paper is key, the most submitted paper?
Yeah, the most submitted paper, yes. Once they give us that paper, we all go back again as senators, social members of the committee, to review those things and look at what they are talking about. We haven't gone there yet because the hearing is continuing. But once it's concluded, we are going back again inside to look into those things and see where we can, where we agree or disagree.
So what you're saying in essence is that the committee makes recommendations that is still subject to the consideration of all the lawmakers when it's brought back to.
Oh, definitely, yes.
All right. President Tulu has also again insisted that the bills are not against any region of the country. How has a public hearing, you know, helped to alleviate the concerns that were raised at the initial stage?
Which is why I said initially that I'm surprised that those positions are no longer held. I mean, I've not heard it. But if you look at the bill again, this president was correct. This bill was not targeted against any section of the country. Rather, it was, it's actually a bill that can pull everybody up. It's a bill that can actually expand the economic base of this country. It's a bill that can revive every state to look inward and see how we can help the economy and help our individual states, go well for certain states.
Yeah.
And so it's correct. It was not meant to hurt any part of, any section of the country. Even Lagos, if you really look at Lagos that everybody talked about, they're going to lose some money because before, now as you speak, if you make a phone call, the headquarters of MTN is in Lagos, everything is in Lagos, and so the bill is paid to Lagos. And we are saying, no, no, let's, let it be a consumption thing. If I make a, if I make a phone call here, let me pay the tax here.
We have made the phone call.
Exactly. If I, if I drink beer and it's produced here and I'm drinking it here, let me pay the tax here and not pay it in Lagos, where all the headquarters of most of these corporations are. And I think that is fair, and I think that's something that all of us can agree.
Okay.
So I don't know. We are lucky that, you know, cooler heads have prevailed. A lot of people have been able to take a deep breath and say, wait a minute, let's look at this bill really and see what it's all about. And having done so, they can see that there's nothing that is targeted against any section of the country.
So the problem actually was the fact that a lot of people did not read that bill.
Yes.
Because I heard the president of the Senate yesterday where he kept emphasizing, like, read the bill before you make your comment.
Yes.
So maybe, are you saying that why there was so much contention is because a lot of people did not read that?
I agree with you. I mean, I said it, if it's not here, but in another station that I, that I was, that I gave my opinion, that a lot of this problem is because we have not been able to read the bill. We hear rumors, this one said, oh, it's against this, it's against that, but you have not taken time to look at it again and see for yourself whether it's correct. And having done so, you realize that there's something in this bill that is, that is untoward, against anyone.
And probably the history of Nigerians find it difficult to trust their leaders. So when they see anything coming from the leaders, the perception always is, it's anti the people. So there was that agitation, and probably the space of time when it was submitted to now has given enough room for people to actually be educated, to learn and to learn certain things.
That's correct. And the chairman of the Presidential Committee that is reviewing this tax bill has been going all over the place, speaking to, I mean, I know he came to the Senate more than once. He went to House of Rep as well. And he has been visiting so many organizations and interest groups to educate them more about this bill, and I think that has worked. It has worked.
Well, the value-added tax is still a contentious issue. It seems that is one major clause that still sticks out like a sore thumb. But will an overwhelming opposition to the proposed increase override the recommendation of the tax reform bills?
You know, I know there will be a compromise. I mean, nothing is hard on stone here. The president is also, it's the president of the whole nation, is willing to listen, and the Senate and the National Assembly is also listening because we are all represented. Every nook and cranny of this country is still present in the National Assembly. And so the vats that you're talking about, you know, the contention was the issue of population, mainly the issue of population as a means of distribution of vats. As it is, it's 60%, and we're saying to some people, we feel that I, for instance, is one of those senators who feel that that is too high and that we should bring it down. Where we're going to compromise on, I'm not sure. But like I said, by the time we all go back inside and begin to look at this thing, then we'll consider every opinion and see where we can, like I say, it's a compassionate bill. It's not, it's not a bill that is, that is meant to hurt any section of the country. And if it seems so, then we'll look for, yeah, for a comforting point to rest it.
Okay, let's look at this aspect of tax. Definitely helps our people, our nation to generate revenue, and also the businesses must survive. Now, what will happen after this bill is passed, and you still have various states or local government have certain levies? Will this bill, the bill that will holistically address all that? So that you don't have people, this bill coming into enforcement, then the state will still say, look, we have our own, we have other levies, they now give it a different name, levies. So it's they come back to the same businesses. You're paying this tax, and also there's this levy also that is in place.
Yeah, this bill will address that. And even from the, from the national level, if you know that there's an amendment bill to allow FARS to actually collect, be the main collector of our taxes, even at that point. So the issue of every agency doing their own thing, different from the other one, is going to stop. And so in that way, we have a target. We know what is coming, we know where it's coming from, and not from different places where you now begin to have double taxation. So what you're talking about at the local level, at the state level, yes, they will buy into it because that's the reason why they are all part of this process. It becomes the law of the land. It becomes the law of the country. And so, yes, we will be bound by it. And yes, whether local government or state government, who control their, you know, control what goes on within their territories, we have to abide by it. Double taxation will not have a place.
Since all lawmakers have agreed that why this bill has faced a lot of resistors at the initial stage, because a lot of people did not, you know, read or acquaint themselves with the provisions. Would you also say that the resistance also had, you know, politics? That was politics at play? Would you say that political influence also had a lot to do with that resistance?
Of course. I mean, we are all political animals. Anything, look, any bill or anything that comes out today, the first thing that an individual looks like is, what's my interest here? How does it affect me? How does it affect those that I represent? And that's the politics.
Yeah.
So there will always be politics in everything we do. But how we, how we are able to assuage the interests of everybody is what is critical so that we can remain one united and loving family as a nation.
Well, now that the tax reform bills have been widely read by lawmakers and critical stakeholders, tell us more about the spirit and letter of the bills. How do they prioritize the interests of the poor Nigerians and also aim to stimulate economic growth and development?
First of all, poor Nigerians are even exempted completely from paying tax, completely. And so it leaves a lot more money in their hands to do one or two things that they want to do, whether to pay their work school fees, whether to buy food now, medical expenses, whatever it is, they have enough, or there are more money in their hands than before. You can imagine civil servant that earns, what, 70,000 naira, and he's been taxed on that 70,000. Now you take a 70,000 naira home.
So he don't be there, the payee will not be there?
Yes, you take it home because you are outside the tax bracket. And for, for new businesses, up and starting businesses or businesses that, I think it's about 50 million, were exempted from paying taxes. And so the reason why that is done to stimulate the economy is to also give you enough money to put back into your business so you can grow. Because the spirit is that if, if small and medium businesses grow, then the economy will actually pick up. And a lot of people who are now unemployed will be employed. Because government is not, is not the biggest employer of labor. It cannot be. It's the private sector. And so it's this private sector that is being targeted to help them to be on their feet so that they can do what they do best.
Now, I still want to go back to the aspects, the last question, that once this bill is passed, it becomes, and the president has sent it, it becomes the law. But we do have tendencies where governments come in and say, for instance, it's free education, and you have various schools introduce certain levies. Now, they won't call it, they bring in certain levies. And at the end of the day, what I'm asking is, how can the National Assembly ensure that when this is passed, it eliminates the factor of a state government that wants to increase its IGR, or a local government will now come in with different levies? Now, you have tried to exempt the small businesses from it, but they now bring in certain levies. So at the end of the day, whether it is called tax, whether it is called levy, somebody is paying something. So what can be done to ensure that people, it's enforced and people comply?
Well, for me, let me not preempt the governors in doing what you think that they will do. But if they do that, that would be so disingenuous of them because it's a, it's one country. And this is the direction that the country is going, and they are part of it, full part of this partnership. And in this process that we are, you know, going through in reforming the bill. And so if, if they now take with the left hand what they have given with the right hand in the name of levy, that would be so disingenuous, in my opinion, in that wise. But we will visit that issue when it comes. If that becomes the case and there is a lot of uproar across the country, then we'll visit it, clearly to be a breach of the law. And if this is a breach of the law, then the law will have to take its course. But let us not preempt them. Let us see what happens, just like any other bill. Once it's passed, you begin to see how it works and see how the people receives it and see how, you see how it affects the people and see the feedback, you know, because not until it's out there, we won't know exactly the feedback. But we will monitor it, definitely.
We'll definitely keep a close eye on that. The public hearing continues today at the National Assembly, and we also understand that the House of Representatives will also hold a public hearing tomorrow on that. But let's move away from the tax reform bills now. Let's discuss the recent issue in the Senate, specifically the face-off between Senator Natasha and the president of the Senate. Where do you stand on this matter? What are your thoughts on Senator Natasha's outburst and Senator Gosu Laphabio's reaction? There are many interpretations out there, but let's know what you, your perspective as a lawmaker yourself, a member of the opposition, and also the chairman of the Public Petition Committee.
Exactly, exactly. I was ready for you to finish.
Yeah.
And to remind you that I'm the chairman of the Committee on Ethics, Privileges, and Public Petition. That means that I'm the chief judge of the Senate in this matter. So I have no opinion. I don't have any opinion.
Until it's brought to you.
It's going to be referred to my committee. When it comes, then I have, I have to have an open mind and hear what happens.
But you're a witness to that event.
I was not in the chamber that day.
But you've heard what happened.
I saw it on television, yes, I saw it on television.
So let's, let's know your thoughts on a lawmaker perspective.
That would be unlawful.
Okay, since you don't want to have an opinion or you don't want to express your opinion now.
No, but I told you why. Because my position as chairman, that would sit on the matter.
Okay.
So I cannot begin now to, to give an opinion of something I have not really, the distinguished Natasha will have to tell us. So am I going to give an opinion before she even speaks to me? No.
Okay, let's, let's go to the same issue. Some, some arguments have been that oftentimes when a member, a senator, or a senator, you wield the stick, you throw the stick and probably suspension. And sometimes the argument is, why do you have to suspend a lawmaker that his constituents voted to represent them in the Senate, for instance? And in the constitution, the procedure where somebody can no longer represent is a recall. Probably you wait for the next election. Why is that an alternative? Probably you would say it's part of the rules of the House. But is that the only, I mean, I want you to take a look at this. Is it possible to, to take a second look at that sanction measure?
So I'll, I'll address it this way. What would be the alternative?
Asking.
If, if on the floor, a member, a senator, becomes unruly or behaves in a manner that is not distinguished, what, what do you think should be done? You can't flog him. You can't take his seat completely. You can only suspend him.
You're taking the seats.
And the reason, no. Well, you suspend for a period of time. And, and the reason why, why we should behave ourselves is, when that happens, then our people should be able to ask us, why did you go there to do things that led to your suspension? I think that should be the angle I will look at it from.
A lot of my ideas.
So if I do something and I'm suspended, I should, I will expect my constituent to call me and say, so exactly what did you do that led to your suspension? Now we have no representation. Why did you do that? And let me explain to them.
So are they not disadvantaged for the period? For the six months?
If that disadvantage is as a result of my misbehaving, so let my constituent punish me for that.
How?
Well, you know, every four years you go for election. And so let them say, look, you are not representing us well, or you are representing us well.
Well.
But to sit there and do nothing will leave that place.
You can remove the person from committees for some time.
Lawmakers are actually answerable to their constituents, like you mentioned. But a lot of Nigerians don't really understand how it applies, the rules of the Senate, what applies and what does not. Can you let us in with an insight into that matter? Can you let us into the rules of the Senate? What applies? What does the rule say?
It's very simple. It's just like, just imagine that you belong to an old boys or old girls association, and so there's a meeting where, where all of you sit down to discuss. I'm sure that such association has a president, has a secretary, and they have certain obligations to the association. And so if the rule says, for instance, if you don't pay your levy, we won't let you come in, will you now say, look, I have a right to be here because I'm a member of that school? But the rule says that if you don't pay your levy, you can't come in. And so they shut you out. Now, will you now say that the president of that association has done something untoward to that individual? No, it's the rule. And so in the Senate, we have rules. We have a rule book, and that's the rule that everyone follows. So before you stand up to say anything, you go back to that rule book and say, I'm standing on this order to make this point. And then it's recognized and you make the point. And also that in the Senate, as it is in the House of Rep, we all cannot be talking at the same time. You know, growing up, they said, that's a barbarian way of, of holding conversations. And so you have to be recognized. There are many times I raised my, I raised up my hand in the Senate and the Senate president would not even look my direction.
So the Senate president has to see you, recognize you before you can speak.
Yes, even if he sees you, maybe he wants someone else to talk.
So it has its own discretion.
So according to the sitting, the rules that applies to the sitting arrangement, does it also include the fact that a senator will have to be informed prior to, before being moved? Or the senator can just be moved at any time?
You're looking for a way to rope him?
No, I'm asking because we are curious. There's no one who's curious.
Not to be educated.
No, because, because that's the cross of that issue. And so you're bringing me back to it again.
No, I just need to know what the rule says about the arrangement, the sitting arrangement, and how senators can move from one seat to the other.
The sitting, if I'm honest with you, the sitting arrangement at the beginning of the Senate, right, we're all assigned to a particular seat with your name engraved on the, on your table, that this is Senator Neda Imaswe, my name is written there. And so when the Senate president is looking, he can, he knows, even if he forgets her name, he knows who the person is. If I move from my seat to another seat that bears the name of Kule, right, it will be confusing to the Senate president to begin with. And not only that, it's, it's the rule that you, if you want to speak, you must be where an assigned chair for you to speak. So is that prerogative of the president, of the president of the Senate to recognize you before you speak? And it's also the prerogative of the, of the Senate, of the Senate leadership to assign seats, the same way they assign offices, not just seats, they assign offices. I mean, you just don't come and say that I want to, my office should be next to that of the Senate president, or it must be that floor or that floor, that. Those who have those privileges are ranking senators who came back and said they want to retain their offices and so on and so. But for the new ones, you come, they assign you, give you a key to their office. And so you cannot begin to raise dust and say, no, I don't like that office, I need to go to another one, and so on and so forth, as it is with your seat. So that much I'll say. I don't want to say much beyond, beyond that.
Well, but I would say that this is not the first time that, you know, issue about seat is coming up in the Senate. We've seen some senators raise issue about ranking. Ranking also plays a huge role in where you sit. Why is it so important, that seat? What is the, would I say, the significance of where you sit in the chamber? What's that significance?
I don't know. I mean, to each, he's own. I sit at the back, and it's very, it's very good for me. Why? It's, it's a theater. The Senate is a theater where you have the graduating, you know, seats. So the fact that you sit in front of me, you don't, I mean, I'm not covered. I'm not blocked. The fact that someone is behind me, it's not blocked, you know, so that's the way the side, the chambers is built.
So the Senate president can see you from anywhere?
Yes, he sits there.
Cameras can see you from anywhere.
Yes, it goes that way. He sees everybody. And I like my seat because if I want to go to the bathroom, I don't have to walk all the way, I just get up and then go in. So I'm not complaining.
So what would be your advice to Nigerians who have already formed an opinion on this matter, even your, your committee who sits, you know, looked into issues like this? What would be your advice to Nigerians who have already formed a notion, you know, without even knowing what applies in the Senate? What would you, what would you advise them?
Yeah, it's an appeal. I will appeal to them to please wait for us. Let us look at this matter dispassionately and then come up with a position. It's not fair on both parties to begin to take a position when the truth or the facts of the matter is not known yet. What people are commenting on is what they saw on television, but I'm sure that it's a lot more than that. And so I will plead that they should be patient with us and let us, let the Senate take its proper course. And at the end of the day, there will be, there will be a decision, and they will be informed about, about it all.
All right.
Okay, I want us to take a look at this, the recent revelation from the United States concerning USAID sponsoring terrorism in Nigeria. What are your thoughts on the issue that the National Assembly or is it the House What are your thoughts on the issue that, uh, that the national assembly or is it the House of Rep wants to investigate? What are your thoughts on, on that revelation and also the counter statement by the ambassador?
Well, um, I, I, that is on one side. And I'm looking at the other side where the president of the United States said, uh, the president of Ukraine was the aggressor, was the one who invaded Russia. I don't know if that is true. So now let's come back to USAID.
Okay.
Uh, that the, the sponsor Boko Haram, I don't know. I also don't know. I don't know these two facts or these two issues, which of them is true. Uh, but yes, if it's a heavy, heavy or weighty allegation that, that has been made. And I'm sure that, um, that, that the various institutions will not just fold their arms without looking into it. But for me, I, I would say, I don't see how USAID will be financing Boko Haram. It, it just doesn't, it just doesn't, um, yes, it, it doesn't tally for me. Um, what is their interest in, in, in financing Boko Haram? That's the first thing I'll ask myself. So yes, if they want to do it, what is their interest?
Probably donations, because some people have said if there is no, you know, unrest in some certain regions, there won't be any need to fund these agencies. So do you think that's the sentiment at play?
No, no, I, I, the America that I think I knew a little about, I don't think they will, they will do that. I don't believe it.
Okay, if, uh, on the, on the, on the floor of the, of, of the green chambers, uh, a lawmaker also said that when you go to, for instance, Borunu State, you see a lot of NGOs in there and what are they really doing in there? And another senator once said that, uh, uh, you see people, uh, helicopters go to, uh, this part of the north. And even on the streets, you hear that narrative. Now, how quick is the national assembly when you begin to get those feelouts? Not just yesterday, even before that thing came, how quick do you respond and investigate those things when you start hearing those?
You see, this is part of the problem that we all have been facing in this country. I went to Invest of Meduguri. And when I went there, when I was there, it was the most peaceful place on earth. I can tell you that. Um, this issue of skirmishes or people fighting over anything never arose while I was there. Now with the coming of the Boko Haram, Borunu State became the epicenter of the whole thing. And of course, naturally to attract soldiers, whether police, everybody went there to, you know, to protect the, the, the life and property of, of Nigerians there. Helicopters, it's not only in Borunu. Look, anywhere in this country where you have solid minerals, you have gold, you have all those things. Helicopters always go there, they go there. And so the question is, what, what, these helicopters, what do they go to do? They are there to, to steal our natural resources. So my problem is not about Boko Haram. If, as a matter of fact, I wouldn't think that they are complicit in all of these things when it comes to stealing our natural resources. Which is what we are saying, that let every state go back and, and, and protect its own natural assets and see how we can begin to, to use it for the general, generality of Nigerians. And not just depend on this oil coming from Niger Delta. This is a problem. So these helicopters you're talking about is not, I, I'm not even relating it to Boko Haram thing. I'm relating it to our natural resources. Borunu has a lot of natural, I don't know if you know, has one of the rare natural resources in this country. The, the story is not out yet, in my opinion. It's not out yet. We need an in-depth investigation as to what is happening in all these states as well where we have deposits of natural resources. What is happening to them?
So who is taking them?
Financing is still a known fact, but do you think, don't you think we should heap some of the blame on financial institutions for failing to intercept some of these funds that, you know, are being exchanged? And, uh, you know, the chunk of the money that passes through the banking system?
I agree with you. I mean, the, the, the banking system, you go, you, if you go to the bank and ask for money, they will tell you they have new notes. But if you go to the next party, you see people boxes and boxes of new money selling to those who want to spread money. And I always, always ask myself, but I just went to the bank on Friday and instead they have no money and this is money here. So how did these people get it? So the bank managers also, the, the bank, the banking institutions have a lot of questions to answer as well.
And also the senators, the national, the lawmakers have questions because you have oversight. You do oversight these agencies. What type of oversight, what type of query do you issue? Having seen and observed, this, this are anomalies.
First of all, I will say the problem, the, the, the handicap we have as, as lawmakers is that we cannot come and arrest you. But the government, the, 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 the president can arrest you or the governor of the state can arrest you because they are the apparatus of, of, uh, the police and, and the rest. If you go to these parties and they have this money, police should come and arrest them, arrest them, seize the money, prosecute them, investigate them and let, trace it to where it's coming from. It's easy to trace where money is coming from. Arrest them. Once you arrest them, they will tell you who gave them the money. And then you go further. We don't do that. And so it continues. That's our problem.
Well, we must thank you so much for your time, time with us on the program, Senator Neda Imaswen. It was a delight speaking with you this morning.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time with us.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so very much. I appreciate it.
That's a package from us here in Abuja. It's back to you in Lagos, Veronica and Ibrahim.